Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Weathersfield Board of Education. Tonight is Tuesday, February 8th. We are in the Town Hall of Chambers. Alan, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman Kerry. Good evening, everyone. Mrs. DeRoberts?
Here.
Mrs. Granato?
Here.
Mrs. Drew?
Here.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mr. Lackavoli?
Here.
Dr. Regan Lefevre?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Chairperson, Vice Chairperson, Mr. Cassio?
Here.
Chairperson Kerry?
Present.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Lena Usello. All present.
Thank you. If we could stand and have the students of Highcrest lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to God, under the United States of America, and to a republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Emmett, student staff recognition.
Yes, this evening, Mr. Kerry, we have a group from Highcrest Elementary Schools. If you all could come up to the podium and share with us what's going on at Highcrest.
Just let the screen go down. It makes a lot of noise. It needs a new light bulb. We're good.
Today is Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. That song was "Don't Give Up" by Bruno Mars. Pause, freeze. Please take a moment of silence to reflect on our mindfulness quote for today. This week at Highcrest, we are focusing on emotions. Our quote for the day is "Don't allow your emotions to overpower your intelligence." We have two Highcrest birthdays to celebrate today: David and Ms. Parko's class and Raiden and Ms. Wilkinson's class. Happy birthday, Bulldogs. Today is our PTO meeting. Remind your parents to join in the fun. Board of Ed members, are you ready for the joke of the day? Imagine this: The teacher says, "If I have six oranges in one hand and seven apples in the other, what would I have?" The student says, "Big hands." Remember, Bulldogs, be safe, be respectful, and be responsible. And remember, Bulldogs, we are better together.
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Emmett. My name is Christine Maury, and I'm the proud principal at Highcrest Elementary School. In December, I had the pleasure of speaking with you about the leader-leader model at Highcrest. And that evening, I brought four exemplary educators to speak to you. Tonight, we continue to highlight the leadership model at Highcrest. And I brought with me some students tonight, not just any students, but three exemplary students. They are the definition of our promise to be safe, to be respectful, and to be responsible. Please let me introduce you. This is Matthew Scheinberg, Brenna Zimmerman, and Aleah Joseph. Matthew is the superintendent award winner for Highcrest. Brenna is a soccer player who led her team to the finals for Weathersfield Youth Soccer. And Aleah is a sixth-grade basketball player, and currently, her team is undefeated. Additionally, they are also three musicians, actors, actresses. They just received their role today for the Highcrest musical Frozen. And so, please let me introduce you to Hans and Elsa and the storyteller. Yay! Exemplary students, right? So, back to them. I'd like for them to share with you what leadership looks like from the student lens at Highcrest.
Hello, Board of Education. And I think that doing the morning announcements is a really fun thing that you can do in the morning. You are also able to listen to a song to get your spirits up and ready to start the day. Like you just heard, that is what we usually do for the morning announcements. We usually start with a song, then we say the date and what the song was. After that, we say an SEO quote of the day and the birthdays. And lastly, we say if there are any after-school activities for that day. For the sixth graders, you get to be heard by all of the kids in the school. But for the kids in the younger grades, you get to submit a joke that can be heard when doing the morning announcements. Therefore, the announcements are just a fun way to have kids hear you and a great way to start your morning. Next, I want to tell you all about Book Buddies at Highcrest. I think that Book Buddies is a great way for kindergarten students to be able to do fun things with older students. It is always a fun thing to do with little kids. I love being able to see my little friends once in a while. I think that all of the little kids in kindergarten have so much fun seeing other people sometimes. The fun thing also is that you can see your family or cousins. Like when I was in fourth grade, I got to be with my cousin Maeve. And now, since I'm in sixth grade, I get to see my cousin Fanula when I'm doing safety patrol. In the end, Book Buddies is just a fun way to be able to do things with younger kids. Next up is my great friend Brenna.
Hi, Board of Education. Thank you for having me today. My name is Brenna Zimmerman, and today, I will be talking about the trash outside our school. When I go outside for recess, I walk around, and I see trash in puddles, masks on the ground, and wrappers in the woods. I knew we had to do something about this to make our school environment cleaner and safer. When we go outside or have lunch outside, kids throw around their trash, then just walk away to go play. We can also see dirty disposable masks in the woods and rubber balls, too. The trash outside is not the janitor's responsibility. Especially for fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, we are old enough to clean up our mess. Additionally, we only have a limited staff of custodians, and we can't make their life harder. It is probably harder for younger kids in our school to see all the trash outside and know they will have to deal with it for more years to come. We must do something about this together, because we are better together. To prevent trash outside from expanding, we can do a few little things, such as putting our masks around our wrists when we go outside and eat lunch, or throwing our trash out right away if we are eating outside. It only takes a few simple things for our first step. I've started creating these signs that say, "We are better together. Let's clean up Highcrest." They're small and holdable. We haven't started passing them out yet, but we will begin soon. This slide is about the cleanup committee. We go outside during our free period to pick up trash in different sections of the school every Thursday. We have a group of seven every week, including myself and Mrs. Maury. I have 32 volunteers from the sixth grade and everyone else's support. I create these bags for everyone. They consist of gloves, a garbage bag, wipes, and don't forget about the green string keychain to show your support. Thank I presented to each sixth-grade class about what I am doing to help our school. When I got back to homeroom, 32 students emailed me and asking if they could help me out. They always ask me when their day is to help out and are always so excited. Thank you and everyone for your support. Now, here's my good friend Aleah to talk to you about Safety Patrol and Spirit Days.
Hello, Board of Education. I'm Aleah Joseph. I'd first like to talk to you about Safety Patrol. Safety Patrol is a fantastic way to help our sixth graders learn social and kindness skills with our younger students. I say this because as we go around our kindergarten classrooms, get to learn about the younger kids. And the kindergarteners are a great help to us. They are so sweet and respectful. They give us comfort when we talk to them. Also, as we spend more time with them, we start growing new friendships. For example, when I walk into my Safety Patrol classroom, I'm flooded with lots of hugs and hi's. Our wonderful principal, Ms. Maury, also got sixth graders Safety Patrol belts to wear when we were doing work. These help alert the kindergarten is when someone from sixth grade walks in. Here's what they look like. Next, I'd like to talk to you about Highcrest Spirit Days. Spirit Days is a fun day/week where we can express ourselves and our styles. For sixth graders, it's also a great way to save up our bucks and be responsible with our tickets. For example, when in sixth grade, here, Highcrest spends all of their bucks on small or popular viral toys. They aren't using their tickets wisely. But since Spirit Days are an option for us, they allow us to think and use our bucks purposefully and wisely. It also... Sorry. It also gives us a way to think about others. The reason why I believe this is because when we approach a day or topic, we are thinking about how others may approach the day or topic. For example, a girl in my class was thinking, "What should I do for Spirit Day?" And her little, kind, considerate mind was going around asking others about what she should do. And together, it's still tricky to find a topic/day, but together, we were able to expand our thoughts and listen to others.
In the end, you get to see your little friends at Book Buddies and get your morning started with the morning announcements.
Cleaning up Highcrest is a fun experience to help our community and earth. We can have fun outside and have fun knowing we are helping out our school environment.
As you can see, Spirit Days and Safety Patrol are an amazing way to help students learn communication skills with younger students. I hope we will keep this running for more years to come here at Highcrest. We are better together.
Thank you so much. Great job, guys. Any board members with comments or questions? Ms. Granato?
I'd just like to comment. That was excellent. And can I ask you, how do you just... Do you volunteer to do this? Do you get picked to be the leader of these activities? Go ahead.
We get picked by Ms. Maury. She comes into our classroom and pulls us out for a second to tell us that we're going to be doing this. And then, we have little meetings with her once, like, two times a week, so then we can... So then, she can help us, and we can start writing what we're going to say.
And then, you organize the activity with your peers?
Yes.
Great. Congratulations.
Any other board members with comments?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
I really enjoy hearing about how you engage the other students so that they really feel like they're a part of something, and they want to join you. They want to do this. I think that that speaks to your leadership abilities, that they want to do it and they're excited and interested.
Mr. Cassio?
Great job. I'm really proud of all of you, and I can't imagine what the other kids think of you as well. I think it's a great leadership quality. But most importantly, I think you guys are having fun doing this, correct? And that's what it's all about, you know, learning, enjoying, teaching other individuals, and also having fun. And I can't wait to see Frozen. Congratulations.
Anyone else? Seeing none, thank you, guys. Great job. Moving on to approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the January 25th, 2022 board meeting?
I'm going to abstain.
Do we have a motion?
Some will.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any comments, questions? Seeing none with a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Can you raise your hands, please? Two. Abstain. Two or three?
Two, right?
Yep.
Mr. Riley and Ms. Drew?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to make comment, please step to the podium, state your name, your address. You have five minutes to make your comments. Seeing none, we move on. Moving on to communications. Mr. Emmett?
Thank you, Mr. Kerry. Good evening again, everyone. I start off communications this evening with some sad news in the Weathersfield community. We recently lost our library media specialist, Kelly Petro of Highcrest Elementary School. Kelly passed away recently. And it was a tremendous loss to the district. And I have to say that the staff and the leadership at Highcrest Elementary School was nothing short of amazing in making sure that our students came in last Monday to an environment that was nurturing, that was comforting. And while they were hurting themselves, they made sure they put the kids first. Losing Kelly certainly is a major blow to Highcrest Elementary School. She was an avid reader and really helped to develop the passion in students with regard to reading and being a part of the Highcrest community. And while we provide the Petro family with our deepest condolences, I'm also very pleased to report that the Petro family is giving back to the district. So, in honor of Kelly, and in lieu of flowers, the Petro family requested that any donations come to the Weathersfield Public Schools so that we can provide library books in our libraries across all seven schools in Weathersfield. So, deepest thank you to the Petro family and our deepest condolences as well. A few other items with regard to communications this evening. Obviously, you heard the governor's news yesterday with regard to the mask mandate. Thank you to everyone who has already weighed in and multiple emails yesterday. As I said in my communication this afternoon with regard to the COVID daily rate, one of the things that happens now at this point in time is this goes before the legislature. The information I got this afternoon from the State Department of Education at 4:46 PM was that it goes before the House on Thursday this week, and then the Senate will take it up on Monday. So, at this point in time, we're waiting for the guidance coming from the state. Certainly, with regard to our numbers, we'll get into deeper discussion about that during our COVID update, but our numbers are certainly going in the right direction. As a matter of fact, today, I only reported one case across the entire district. That is the lowest number of cases that we've seen since November. So, that's a step in the right direction. So, we will have more information forthcoming on that. I do want to give everybody an update also on the building project. As we speak, the educational specifications for both Hamer Elementary School and Highcrest are in the works. I do expect to have for you at week's end a draft of the enrollment update, as well as the scenario planning. Our expectation is that we will be presenting to you at the board meeting coming up in March, at which point in time, we'll be looking for your approval to move forward with a specific scenario. At this point in time, we are updating our timeline with the expectation of submitting a grant application to the State of Connecticut by June 30th and expecting to go to referendum in November. So, we are moving at a quick pace at this point in time. So, there'll be lots more forthcoming. You'll also notice on the agenda tonight, we have two meetings of the Facilities and Maintenance Committee. This committee is going to really be ratcheting up its work as this data comes in and the planning ratchets up. And with that, that is communications this evening. Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Moving on to action items. Do we have a motion to approve the 2022 graduation rate? Mr. Cassio?
Thank you, Chuck. It's my pleasure to move that the Weathersfield Board of Education set the 2022 Weathersfield High School graduation date for Friday, June 17th, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Emmett, any comments?
Right now, at this point in time, this is the last day of school for the 2021-22 school year. Obviously, with statute, we have the ability to set this date. So, even if there are snow days that take us into the following week, this date will stay strong where it is. Certainly, among parents and families, the Friday is most appreciative. They enjoy that, obviously, for travel and for family gatherings. In addition to that, because it's not on a Thursday when the Department of Motor Vehicles is open extended hours, this will give us ample opportunity to find places to park. The expectation is we'll have a traditional graduation ceremony over at Cove Park. You know, again, the expectation is our numbers will be low as they were last year, and we will bring everybody together in town for a great graduation ceremony to honor the class of 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Reports and discussion items. First read of the policy updates. Mr. Emmett?
Yes, the Policy and Planning Committee recently met and had a whole plethora of updates to policies from our legal team, Shipman and Goodwin. You receive those in your packet. If you have any questions with regard to these policies, please reach out to Mr. Riley, the chair of the Policy and Planning Committee. Again, we have a lot of policies that need updating, so you'll be seeing these coming through board meetings for the rest of this school year. So, again, these are updates based on changes to statute, and they are done through our council, Shipman and Goodwin.
All right. And just so everyone knows, there'll be a second reading, and then next meeting is when we vote on them.
Correct.
So, if we have questions or discussion, it can happen then, too. Any comments or questions? All right, thank you. Mr. Emmett, COVID-19 update?
All right. Mr. Bearball, come on up, sir. All right. This evening, I can report, we have a total in district of 853 cases. As I said during communications, our rate of infection is on the way down, which is certainly good. We had one case today. Yesterday, over a four-day weekend, we had a total of 14 cases, eight students and six staff members. Again, we see the numbers headed downward. From a town perspective, the town is still in red alert at 66.5 cases per 100,000. That is down markedly from the previous week, where it was north of 100. And two weeks prior to that, it was up well over 200. So, the numbers are definitely coming down at this particular point in time. We are not currently seeing spread within athletics. We continue to see spread among family members. That's what it's primarily been at this point in time. From a vaccination rate, we are a little north of 75% of our students vaccinated, age 12 to 17. The 5-11 vaccination rate continues to lag a bit. We are just a shade under 40% fully vaccinated. And we have approximately 51% of our 5-11-year-olds that are vaccinated with at least one dose. So, Mr. Bearball, from a perspective of PPE test kits and masks, can you talk about that with the district?
Absolutely. We have ample supply of tests. We have ample supply of masks. I just brought out hand sanitizer, wipes to all the schools. Everything we need to keep us going in the right direction, we have, and we have ample supply of. The nurses are great, and the facilities are great. Getting to me what they need, I get them out to them. It's a good feeling that we're seeing the numbers go down, and our quarantines are... Today, we had zero quarantine. So, those are going low, too. So, we're having more of our kids in school. We're being effective, and we're keeping them in school and getting them the education they need. Hopefully, we continue down this route, and we continue to move forward so we can get back to where we were pre-pandemic. That would be... That's all our goal, right? So... But we have everything we need to keep us going in the right direction, and no matter what the future brings with mandates and masks and everything like that, we have us to keep going, and the policies and the procedures in place to keep us be safe and move forward within our district. So, they'll continue to do the great job they do at our schools, and our nurses continue to do a fantastic job, and our administration. So, we're poised and ready to go. Keep moving forward.
And again, from a perspective of the mask mandate, obviously, you know, we're waiting for that legislation to come through. So, the scenario would work like this, assuming that the House and the Senate approve this legislation. The legislation... Now, technically, right now, it's stated by the governor yesterday. It is February 28th. I had the opportunity with a group of superintendents today to talk with House Speaker Ritter, and he talked about the seven-day waiting period after a bill is signed into law. So, technically, that would put that date out from February 28th to March 7th. I don't know if they'll make an adjustment, but that was discussed today. And again, I want to make sure that we put out information that is accurate, and I'm not trying to be first. I'm trying to be correct and accurate. So, we'll see how that plays out. Now, in the event, let's say, for example, that the House or the Senate decides not to vote in favor of this, the executive order would end as of the 15th of February, and then so would the mask mandate. So, from a perspective of what we're looking at, for me, it's moving ahead with contacting those that I have contacted and been around from the beginning. That's Charles Brown from the Central Connecticut Health District. We had a conversation with him today. Given where our numbers are headed, he can support us lifting or, you know, relaxing the mask mandate. I also want to be clear, too. I've heard from both sides. I've heard from those that are against masks and saying, "Time's up. We need to stop." And I've also heard from family members that have said that, you know, "It's worked. It's been in place. Don't, you know, don't lose it now." So, it's really trying to strike that balance, looking at our data, looking at, you know, what we're doing in our schools with the tools. Remember, masks are one of a series of tools that we use as mitigation strategies in our buildings. The other thing I want to be clear about, too, if the mask mandate ultimately lifts, if I have families that wish to continue to send their students in in masks, if I have staff members that continue to want to wear masks, they are certainly welcome to do so. We have an ample supply of N95s for staff, and we certainly have the PPE for students as well. Not the N95s, but we do have cloth masks if they need them. I think the other thing that we need to be aware of here, there are some other items with regard to mitigation strategies moving forward. I have said from the beginning, if your child is sick, if your child is symptomatic, they need to stay home. That is not going to change, and that's going to become more important as we move forward. Again, if your child is sick and symptomatic, they need to be at home. We do have test kits available. So, again, any parents that see that their children are symptomatic, contact your nurse, and we'll get you a kit so that you can test and get that test immediately and get those results. I think, you know, the other piece moving forward, there are other items here. Talking with the principals today, you know, one of the things the principals talked about was having a plan if we transition away from wearing masks. I've got kids that have worn masks since they began school. I have first graders that have never... and kindergartners that have never seen life without a mask. So, we have to look at that and be sensitive to that, how that's going to work. I also still need clarification with regard to transportation, because right now, as it stands, while the governor's proposal is to eliminate masks in class, that mandate in schools, right now, the CDC still provides the guideline around transportation. And my interpretation of current statute is that students would still have to wear a mask on the bus. So, and until that changes from the CDC or the state provides some additional guidance there, the expectation would be any of our students riding a bus for a trip to school or an athletic event would have to wear a mask during that trip. So, again, that's subject to change. And as I have said from the beginning, the idea here is I want to make sure that I got accurate information to families, and we'll do that as soon as we get updated information from our friends at the legislature, as well as the State Department of Education. And last, with regards to the mask mandate, one of the things we heard today from House Speaker Ritter was the fact that with the mask mandate lifting, there will still be the authority by the Commissioner of Education to be able to reinstitute the mask mandate in the event that the numbers rise. So, that's another thing to be aware of. We're still going to continue to watch the numbers very carefully, and we'll make our decision based on science. So, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Thank you, Mr. Bearball. Any questions or comments from the board? Yes, Dr. Regan Lefevre?
I have a question about decision-making at the local level. I mean, this should be very straightforward, but looking into it, it was a bit confusing. Who makes that decision ultimately? Let's say the mask mandate expires. Is it the Board of Education? Is it the superintendent? Is it policy, or is it implementation? And how do we get there?
The way I understand it, from what I hear from the state, it's the role of the superintendent. I will tell you right now, the way I understand it and the way I interpret it is that as of the vote that takes place, when it gets to the point where that mandate is no longer in place, it's not there. If the board wished to reinstate- If the Board wished to reinstate a local mask mandate, that would be at the purview of the Board.
So policy is ours. The day-to-day operations is the superintendent. So generally, we take policy as a recommendation from the superintendent and from Shipman and Goodwin. And then we entertain it, and then go the procedural route of that policy, which is two board readings, has to go through committee, there's a procedure for it.
So the implementation is, in terms of implementing what comes down from state-level governance? The Board of Ed can potentially act independently if it wishes to?
Yes. Yes, it can.
Until the State Board of Education can act unilaterally based on their reading of the situation.
Right.
But not, they would be the one that would initiate it, not Department of Health. Is that my understanding?
To initiate a mask mandate again?
Yes.
It's, I understand it to be the State Department of Education, Commissioner of Education.
So, and this is not your question, this is just a rhetorical question. We all agree we want to follow the science, and why isn't, is the State Department of Education making determination about science rather than the Department of Public Health, of which we have based all our decisions here for the health and safety of its students? I'm not saying that's your, I'm just saying, and I'm not trying to make this a debate, I'm just saying, I want people to understand, that's where it is now.
Right.
And there, and I, and I agree with my colleague here, that the confusion has been very unproductive for every school district in this state. I talk to people that are other Board of Ed members, I think we all do. This confusion is not fair to you, it's not fair to the staff, it's not fair to the parents, but there's confusion, and I hope in the next couple of days that confusion is clarified, because to me, there are some issues here that are just not consistent with what we've been doing, and if there's a reason for that, that needs to be explained by the policymakers at Hartford. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Any, any more comments?
No, that answers my question.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Cassio.
Yeah, I just want some clarification regarding if an individual tests positive, they remain home for five days now?
Correct.
And then they have to get a negative test before they can, they can still come back?
They can still come back if they have no fever and symptoms are either gone or severely lessening. They actually don't, we recommend that they have a test, and we'll provide that to them, but per the new guidance out, they don't have to take a test. But they can't have a fever, and they can't have outward symptoms, they must be getting better. That's, that's what, that's the verbiage.
Yeah, and I, I just repeated that, because that seems to be the...
We recommend and will provide them with a test, we try, but we, that's not what the policy says.
That seems to be an ongoing question within families at this point.
Right.
And the other thing is, Michael and, you know, colleagues, I, it's not an easy situation, but my concern in what you just mentioned was that CDC masks-wearing on buses. And I think that message really needs to be given to Corpus Christi as well, since they've already sent a notice out with regards to their, what they're doing at this point. And I hope that, you know, they realize that, you know, they also have to maintain that particular mandate as well.
Yeah, that's actually, the Corpus Christi communication that went out today talks about may, masks may be needed on transportation. We interpreted, after getting some support from council, that it is a mandate. The other piece with regard to Corpus Christi, you know, you may ask, well, how come Corpus Christi has already put the, you know, the mandate out that it's ended and that's it? Corpus Christi, being a parochial school, doesn't have the same level of oversight that we have as a public school district, so. And you might have heard in their communication, some of the archdiocese across the state had already done away with the mask mandate long before now. Hartford Archdiocese had stuck with it, now they're deciding to go lockstep with the rest of the diocese. So that's the, the difference there. Thank you, John, for that question.
My only concern is that since we're providing transportation for them, they need to be aware of what our standards are.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Um, yes.
Yes, Mr. Roberts.
Do we know how the Catholic schools who have it, who have done away with the masks, how they fared as far as cases go?
I apologize for that.
I, I don't have data for the other Catholic schools. I do have data because we provide the nursing support for Corpus Christi. We do have the, the list, so I can see with Corpus Christi how many cases we've had there. But Janice, I don't know for, for the other parochial schools, I don't know what that data is.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bearball.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bearball.
Moving on to meeting cell, Policy and Planning on 12422, Mr. Riley.
Thank you. The Policy and Planning Committee meeting was held January 24th, 2022, is still in building lower level. The meeting was called to order at 6:32. In attendance were Mr. Emmett, Dr. Reagan-Lafave, Mr. Lackavoli, and myself. Mr. Emmett noted that previously, the Weathersfield Board of Education had subscribed to CAVE for policy and planning support, but over the last several years, we've used Shipman and Goodwin for more timely service response. The committee is charged with reviewing proposed policy changes and providing recommendations to the Board. During the committee's review of the numerous proposed policy changes, Series 1,000 through 9,000, and the Fall 2021 update provided by Shipman and Goodman, Mr. Emmett noted that many of the changes were made in response to modifications to Title IX and recently passed or pending state legislation. Mr. Lackavoli suggested that the committee look into expanding flexibility on device use in support of student wellness. Mr. Emmett noted that additional meetings will be scheduled in the near future to review additional modifications to the Policies and Planning Manual. The committee agreed to recommending forwarding the policy and planning changes to the full Board for a first reading on the Board's regularly-scheduled February 8th, 2022 meeting. The meeting adjourned at 7:45.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Community and Public Relations, 12722, Mr. Healy.
Yes, so we met with Mike and Matt and John, just to talk a little bit about how we can, sorry. How we can work together in terms of alerting the need of this incredible public capital improvement project we've been talking about with the elementary schools and some of the areas that we are permitted to, to advocate and on what form, realizing that this is going to take quite a level of, of engagement with the community. Talked about some of the partners that we're all going to enlist and start working with parents, teachers, and others in our school systems to talk about the issues at hand and why this, this plan that we will soon be initiating and explaining is a thoughtful, a forward-seeking plan that we believe is an investment in our community, but most importantly, providing badly-needed repairs and renovations to our school system, which really set us on a path for the next, I think, generation of Weathersfield school system, uh, school, schoolchildren. So it was mostly that, came out with some ideas about how to actually, you know, encourage our students to get involved in it to a certain degree where appropriate, but also how we're going to have to work across our, our community to do it. And I think that was about it. Matt, do you want to add anything to that and help me out here?
No, you covered it well.
Oh, thanks a lot.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the Budget Workshop from 2522, Ms. Drew.
So on February 5th, well, we met bright and early on a Saturday morning, and we invited the entire Board and the Town Council, where we had our first look at the superintendent's presentation of the budget. And it, one of the major factors driving the budget is the significant, significant increase in insurance costs, and that is going to be a, a large thorn in our current side. So, but I'll just say, for the rest of the Board, you received the binder with everything, all the line items, and if you have any questions, please make sure that you send the questions to Matt Kazaka and then CC the entire Board, so that when those questions are answered, everybody's able to see them. But, yeah, it's not a no-increase budget, so, but we will do what we can and we'll continue to monitor it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative, WEC. It was held on 2722.
Okay. Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative had a meeting on Monday, February 7th, is a Zoom meeting. I've said before, the mission of WEC is that all Weathersfield children, birth to aid our healthy, developmentally-successful learners and connected to the community. Each WEC meeting now begins with a parent voice, and this month's parent was Jasmine Rivera. She's a mother of a four-year-old who lives in the Follybrook Apartments. Jasmine was recently awarded a Mayor Charity Ball Scholarship, and her daughter plans to start kindergarten in August. Amber Calderon was our provider guest. She is the coordinator for the CREC Early Head Start and Head Start for Weathersfield families. Please check the CREC, Head Start, or WEC websites for info on this incredible program, which is, provides for six-weeks-old to seven-year-olds. Jim Welch, the WEC coordinator, spoke of the increase in social media activity on the WEC website and the doubling of the Sparkler registrations. Sparkler is an app for parents of young children that helps them track their child's developmental growth. Weathersfield preschool parents should visit the Sparkler site and register with the provider code WEC, W-E-C. Weathersfield is most fortunate to have parent ambassadors, and we have Jermaine, NATO, and Marie Vasquez are the parent ambassadors, and Ivani Montos is one of the 15 parent cabinet members. This group, and Weathersfield is one of very few towns in Connecticut, that has direct communication with the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood, and they recently met with the Lieutenant Governor in December discussing concerns and future focuses for our early childhood in the state. Community members are encouraged to reach out to our ambassadors. And the meeting's final discussions were on the preschool and our facility's 10-year plan, the Weathersfield Library may return to in-person programs for our young people in March, and Sparkler is their Act of the Month. Adult ed classes have started, and there is need for ESL classes during the day. Family engagement efforts continue with calls being made to new families in our district, and work continues on helping families and students with transitions from preschool to kindergarten, elementary to middle school, and middle school to high school. This is a very dynamic early childhood coalition, and for all information on them, please go to the WEC website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granato. Finance and Operations Committee meeting, 2822, Ms. Drew.
So we met just before the, this meeting, and we reviewed the current budget. We continue to be in a deficit of about a third of a percent of the entire budget, and the Finance Committee continues to monitor it.
Thank you. Moving on to meeting scheduled, as we know, the two Budget Workshop meetings we canceled, and we're waiting for Mr. Kazaka to have his Insurance Committee meeting, and we will probably have a Budget Workshop at the end of the month. CREC Council, 21622, 11:30 a.m. Facilities and Maintenance, 21622 at 6:00 p.m. And Facilities and Maintenance, 3322 at 6:00 p.m. Unfinished business, there's none. Public comment? Anyone in the public wishing to make comment, please step to the podium, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Superintendent Emmett, members of the Board. I am here. I'm Piping D., 471 Bridge Road. I have a student at Emerson Williams, sixth grader. I'm here today to express my concerns about the possibility of lifting the mask mandate on, at the end of the month, essentially. You know, we're still in the middle of a pandemic. No press conference by any politician will change that or automatically change this into an endemic, which clearly it is not. No scientists out there today know when we're going to be, you know, essentially state, lead that, reach that status of the pandemic becoming endemic, right? Endemic simply means that, like a common cold or the flu, we know a lot about it, we have therapeutics that are widely available and effective, right? There's a lot we don't know about long COVID, especially in terms of how it impacts our children. The American Academy of Pediatrics just recently reaffirmed their support for masking in schools for students ages two and above, right? Including staff. So I, I appreciate the discussion here this evening. I know that you all take this very seriously, and I really appreciate the hard work that you do. It can't be easy, and I understand that. We've all been through this for two years. There's been an awful lot of hard work from parents, and here in Weathersfield today, and just like everywhere, we know that kids younger than five still do not have access to vaccines. It's a matter of equality, right? Being patient and waiting for the parents whose kids do not yet have access to vaccine. And it's also about empathy, feeling for them as well, right? I think right now, it gets lost in the media. We talk a lot about statistics, right? They're flying, day in, day out. But just like Mr. Emmett said, here, I feel as though that if we are to lift the mask mandate here in town, our elementary schools are going to get hit disproportionately compared to our older students. And why is that? Mr. Emmett just stated, fully vaccinated 5 to 11-years-old are currently hovering at about 40% right now. 50%, if you consider initially, you know, those that have initiated. Compare that to 18 and 24, they're at about 100% in the state of Connecticut. In Weathersfield, that's about 80, 70%, depending on whether you're talking about initiated or fully vaccinated, right? 12 to 17, a little bit better than 5 to 11. But the point I'm making here is that, here in town, our five elementary schools to date still have one of the poorest HBAC systems around. Why is that? Our buildings are old. It's nobody's fault that that's the case when the pandemic happened, but that's the fact. Our students are sitting there in the freezing cold because the windows are open, because they have to be. Masking is one of the most important mitigation tools that we have today. So I implore you to please continue to take that into consideration. And the other thing that we're talking about in the media today is the, the fact that the numbers continue to come down. I'm very happy about that, as I'm sure you all are as well. But keep in mind that, that is relative to the surge of Omicron, where hospitalization reached 1932 at its peak just three weeks ago. Today, we are hovering at about 770, 780, which is about the same level as it was exactly a year ago, mid-February of 2021, right before we rolled off the vaccination for our seniors. So, yes, it is coming down, but it is still high. This is not yet an endemic, so please, continue with the mask mandate. You know, I feel for the parents, for the other side. I understand that there's some health concerns as well. I am not dismissing those, and I would say that there's a way for us to help those that need that help while still being respectful of this highly contagious disease. So thank you very much for all the hard work that you do. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to make comment? Please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes. Seeing none, we move on to Board comment. Any Board members wishing to make comment? Ms. Granato.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the Weathersfield Education Foundation, and you've heard me talk about it before. It exists to generate and distribute resources to the Weathersfield Public School District for programs and projects, projects that enhance the quality of education and opportunities for students. And I came to you earlier this year as a representative of the Weathersfield Education Foundation to, because we were writing and submitting a Connecticut-grown kids grant, and you were our partners, the Board of Ed. Well, we'd like to thank the Board of Ed for your support in completing all the requirements for this grant. The monies were to be used for the refurbishment of the Keisha greenhouse. That would then be the focus of the Weathersfield Public School Farm to table activities that work with our Nutrition Plan Environmental Units of Studies. While we were unsuccessful in securing the grant, we are not deterred. As a matter of fact, this afternoon, I talked for an hour with the Connecticut State Representative on these grants, and she kind of told us how we could do a better job, basically. So we're working again, and we're also looking at other grants. So we're going to use this work to complete more proposals and find other options for this worthwhile project. Having a functional greenhouse on the Keisha farm property would be transformative for the growth-to-table efforts which have begun in our schools. So I thank you for your partnership, and you'll be here for, hearing from me again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granato. Any other Board members wishing to make comment? Mr. Cassio.
Thank you. Thank you. Meetings being scheduled tomorrow is the Memorial Day Parade Committee meeting at 7:30. I will be attending. Hard to believe, we're worried about May. Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms., Dr. Regan Lefave.
Thank you. I would like to say a few words about COVID. I don't want to jump the gun because we are waiting, as you've explained, for the Legislature to consider what action it should take. But I just wanted to reaffirm my commitment to decision-making which is based in data. It's not a good idea to stop requiring masks because we're tired of it, although we are. It's also not a good idea to keep masks in place just because we're frightened, which we also are, especially those of us who know people who've lost loved ones or have lost loved ones ourselves. We know certain things about COVID. It spreads very quickly. It currently seems to spread on an aerosol model, meaning it's not just droplets. So, it actually can exist in the air. Ventilation's important. Masks, combined with vaccination, is the best way to slow and even stop the spread and also to prevent very serious disease. It seems from my reading of epidemiological literature that 80 to 85% vaccination rates are what are really needed to really reach a kind of herd immunity level, where the virus doesn't have enough viable hosts to continue to mutate and to spread. And we're nowhere near that for our young children, and that worries me. I would like to see some kind of metrics in place to determine whether we keep masks or not. And that could do with whether we are still in the red zone, the number of active cases, and also the vaccination rates. We're doing pretty well at the middle school and high school level. Not quite where epidemiologists would like to see us, but not too bad either. But we're way behind at the elementary level. I've heard from a lot of parents through official channels and less official channels, you know,